Good evening, everyone. I am returning to, we are returning to open session after having just come out of executive session, so thank you. Again, this is the Hingham School Committee meeting of June 6th, and we're going to just move right into our business of the evening, which first item of business is approval of minutes. 4.1 and 4.2, two minutes to be approved. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 5th, 2022, which was a joint meeting with the Student Advisory Council.
Just a second. Thank you, Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? No?
I think they're two abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry. Matt abstained and Ally, okay, thank you. Alright, so those are approved, and 4.2?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 23rd, 2022.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes? You have discussed, okay.
So, under the new business, Hingham Sports Partnership section, it stated, Mr. Colty stated at this point that they are looking for the committee's permission to proceed, and then talks about how we had discussed the positive outcomes, but it never actually says that we did agree to proceed, and I think that should be stated in the minutes. Okay.
Yeah, that we agreed to proceed with the project. Recommended? Alright, do you want to revise? Approved minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 23rd, 2022, as amended.
Do you want to second that, Ally? Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, those are approved as well. Thank you. Alright, item 5 on our agenda, this is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed throughout the meeting. In addition, we set aside 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chair. That's me. You could also, if you would, please come up to the podium. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope or responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts general law, the responsibility of the school committee is to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent, two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district, and three, establish educational goals and policies for schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in respectful manner and to consider the privacy interest of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee, and the school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So if there's anyone here in the audience who is interested in speaking about anything not on the agenda, can come up now. Come on.
Hi, Matt, the Chair. My name is John Daly, Bakersill, and I just wanted to ask relative to, you know, I know there are several trips, you know, slated on tonight's agenda overseas, and I know from the own experience of my son having recently gone on a trip down to DC, that there was some confusion around vaccine status of children, students that are going on these trips. So, you know, there was some confusion around my son. Initially, he was told, you know, in first of all, you know, sort of that's something that's between, you know, I am my son's caretaker, I'm his dad, of course, and I like to think I'm his hero from time to time, but, you know, so I just want to make sure that the school committee is respecting, you know, the individuality, the medical choices that parents are making for, for their child. And, you know, that's primarily while I'm up here, you know. My son was initially told back in September, my wife threw some email that, yes, and then later on it came out that, you know, it was said that, you know, all students must then be vaccinated, and then she went back to, you know, what was said earlier on, you know, alas, my son was able to go. And, you know, the short of it is that, you know, he was, he was made in some small way to, to feel a little less than, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again, you know, moving forward. So I guess, you know, what I'm asking of this school committee and of this, this whole committee is that, that you all, at some point, if you haven't already, and forgive me if I'm out of bounds with this, I'm not privy, is that there's some sort of written policy that we all have, so that we know going forward, some clarity, you know, so as to prevent that no student will be in any way, you know, treated unfairly or discriminated against, you know, you know, based upon specifically the vaccine status. And I respectfully ask that, you know, during this month of diversity, as an educator myself, and, yeah, I guess I'll just kind of, I'll end it there and wrap it up there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
And we do have, as you mentioned, we do have a number of field trips to discuss under item 9, new business, but thank you for your comments. We will consider those as we are approving those or listening to the approval process for those. Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody online? I don't even know how to. Okay. Alright, well, if something pops up, let me know. Alright, so we will then move on to item number 6, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Mastis.
Good evening, everyone. Let me see if I can put this mic so, can you hear me?
Yes. I think it doesn't. It only makes it louder, I think I'm TV.
I just want to make sure that. So, tonight is a bittersweet evening for me and for the administration and the school committee, because tonight I'm announcing that Dr. LaBillaud is going to be leaving the district to take on a new position in the Brockton Public Schools as Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, and I want to announce that tonight. He sent an email out to the district today, and I just want the community to know that we're very proud of Jamie, the work that he's done in this district. I've come to know Jamie, I knew Jamie before I came here, I know him a lot better now, and I want to thank him for everything he's done for the school district and everything he's done for kids, and I know that's at the core of what you do, Jamie, and thank you so much for your time here. We're excited to see what you're doing in your position, because I think your skills and your experience are just so perfect for this role, and we're excited for you. And I'm not sure if you want to say anything.
Just thank you to the committee and to the community. The privilege to work with such a talented faculty for the last six years has truly been the honor of my career, and how lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so difficult, so I'll leave it there. I look forward to, as I said to the faculty earlier today in my communication, cheering them on from afar and watching all the wonderful things that Hingham has in store, and I will miss you all deeply.
Thank you. So, just to give a level of context for Jamie's position moving forward. Adams, and she's going to be posting for an interim Assistant Superintendent. I think it'll give her a chance to see what the job needs, and I think she's considering maybe doing a redesign, a new job description, things of that nature, but I think an interim will allow her some time to actually put that together, and, but if we're looking for, hopefully, a July 1 start for this person, so this will move very quickly, and there'll be an appointment, and then a recommendation will be made to the school committee to actually get an interim place. So, we'll be working on that. I would expect that an advertisement for this internally will go out probably Thursday or Friday this week, so people can expect that. The next thing I have to report is something that's really impressive for Hingham. We have some students at the middle school that participated in the state environmental green team competition, and there were 40,000 students representing 192 schools in Massachusetts that participated, and there were only a handful of students that were actually selected. We have three students that actually were picked for their work from middle school. We have Sarah Cassidy, we have Shayna Miller, and we have Kristen Eisenman, and they designed a textile wristband. I'm not sure if it's individually or as a unit, but they were wristbands, one was identified as a textile wristband, and there were very, very few students that got selected, and, oh, I'm sorry. Kristen Eisenman is from Foster, not from middle school.
Yeah, so two middle school.
She's actually, two middle school students and one elementary student. So I think those students should be celebrated for their accomplishment, and it's really an honor to actually read these students out to the community, so kudos to them and their families and to their schools for the work that they put forward to actually get recognized. So, honor for that, and tied along with that is this weekend's graduation. At this time of the year, we see a lot of great work from our faculty, staff, and administration to honor our students, and the graduation this weekend was just, just well done. And to have the honor of shaking the hands of all our graduates, for me, was a personal honor, and to look them in the eyes and, you know, give them my best was really special, and to see their families just so excited to watch their children, you know, it's really, it's really a highlight, but it's kind of sad, because, you know, you brought them up to be at this stage of their life, and now you've got to kind of let them fly away, it's, that's the sad part, you know. But it was an honor to be there, and thank you, Hingham, for allowing me to be in that position to, to honor our kids. But I want to highlight the high school administration and staff for a well-planned and well-running event, and for the staff that were able to attend, it was just wonderful, a testament of support from staff to be there. So, that, that was just a highlight for me. I told my wife when I took this job that I typically give a graduation speech, but if we were at graduate, if I was able to give a speech, we'd probably still be there. So it's probably a good thing that I didn't have to do a speech, but I told her that would, if I'm going to take this job, I've got to be there for graduation, and it kind of was a fulfilled, fulfilled desire for me. So, that's good, that's that. The last thing I have is on the strategic plan. I know 8.1 has that on, on the update, and I can just talk about it. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. I have a couple things. If I can circle back to Dr. LaBillaud's announcement, we will also be watching you from afar to see how you're doing. This is an amazing opportunity for you, and you should all be very envious of the students of Brockton Public Schools, because you are a talented administrator, and you are going to do amazing things there, just like you did here. So we really sincerely appreciate all you've done for the district over the last six years. You and I have been through a lot of stuff over the last five years. Someone is, they're like, they were like, well, maybe that, the Assistant Superintendent rule, like, right now it's just sort of this catch-all, and I said to Gary, I go, and there's a lot to catch. There is a lot to catch, especially over the last six years. So thank you sincerely for all you have done, and, yeah, it's, we are going to miss you, but we are very, very grateful for your time and your talents, and are looking forward to hearing all the wonderful things you do in Brockton. Thank you. Thank you. I also wanted to make a comment about graduation. We all, all seven of us were able to attend as a school committee, which was wonderful. Doesn't always work out for our own personal lives that we're all able to be there, but it was really, I don't know, there was something about this one that seemed particularly special. I, yeah, I'm not sure what it was, maybe it was just sort of that return to normalcy, but it was a, it was a really special graduation. I had the high honor and privilege of handing all those graduates their diplomas, and I was saying to Ness afterwards, I'm like, it was, it was 312 students, and every single one of them was more excited than any other class I'd ever seen. I'm not sure if they're so happy to leave, or they were just so happy to have it be, you know, a normal graduation, but it was just, every one of them was just grinning ear to ear, it was like, thank you so much, thank you so much. It was really, it was really special, it was a great day. Yeah, so thank you. Under other communications, I wanted to note two things. One, we've gotten a number of emails from students at the high school in the 10th grade history classes for civics projects, and they have taken the civic engagement to a new level, so I'm excited to see it. It's so phenomenal. Some of the ideas they have sent to us have been so fantastic. Most of them are not directly under our purview, but I am actually meeting with Dr. Adams this week, and I'm going to share them with her so that we can, she can share them with the leadership team. I mean, they have had ideas for taking the parking under control at the high school, additional crossing guards, final exams, midterm exams, school start time, we don't want to open that one right now, but that's one of them. Homework, I mean, just, it runs a gamut, but really thoughtful, very well researched, very thoughtful and informative emails. So we are looking forward to somehow taking action on them, whether it's school committee related or through the leadership team. So thank you to the 10th grade students who have reached out, and keep them coming if there's more, if there's more out there.
Can I ask, was this part of the project's citizen grant, this work? I don't know if anyone knows that.
I don't know. I think it, I thought it was just part of their civics curriculum.
I just know they got the citizenship grant last year.
I think it supports the work that's happening, but I don't know if it was grant-specific.
Okay.
Okay.
So I would expect the sophomores from here and out, by the way, to be highly engaged. Each year, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Can I add something to that?
Yes.
So I made the mistake of responding to four students, and I said, I'll come and visit, we'll talk about your ideas, right? And then I didn't, I didn't realize all these other ones were ready to come in.
Now you've got a lot of people to meet with before you leave.
I don't know that's going to happen, but I feel really bad that I can't, it's like, I'll take the whole class with me or something out of it. I kind of feel bad that I can't, I can't meet with all of them.
Yeah, no, the ideas are phenomenal. That's fine. Well, thank you. And then this, on a, on a much more somber note, I just wanted to bring up that I had also received, and I think some other committee members did as well, some communications about school safety and as it related to the tragically heartbreaking, and albeit not surprising unfortunately, school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. I'd reached out to some, the leadership team to say that, you know, every time one of these things happens, I think surely this is the one that's going to change things, but doesn't seem to be making any headway on that matter. But just for folks to know, I did share that the school district does have a safety council that meets regularly with many town departments. We obviously cannot share the information that's discussed there. The school committee is not even privy to that information, but the safety of the students and the staff is of the absolute utmost concern for the district and for this committee, and it's shocking and incredibly tragic and heartbreaking. If folks are in, in a mind to take action on any of this, the Student Organization March For Our Lives is hosting another rally in Boston on Saturday, June 11th. I am planning on attending, if anyone else wants to join. There's a community member, Katie Sutton, and she is organizing folks who maybe to travel in together as a group from Hingham and represent Hingham. If anyone wants to reach out to her, she asked me to share her email, which is katie.sutton@me.com, or to reach out to her on Facebook, and she can give you details on where folks will be gathering to go in as a group. So thank you for that. Alright, moving on to 7.3, any other communications from others on the committee?
No, those were the ones.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Alright, alright, we'll move on to 8, unfinished business, so Dr. Mastis, strategic plan.
Yeah, thank you. The strategic plan is moving along. We have our last meeting tomorrow. We were hoping to actually have it completely presented tonight, but the process of developing the strategic plan, it really allows the committee to come up with strategic initiatives that will help us to kind of shape what the overarching goals of the strategic plan are. There are so many strategic ideas and initiatives that were presented, we had a really hard time to ferret down the 25 to 30 initiatives that will take place over the next three years. So tomorrow, we've dedicated some time to be able to continue to hone that and shape that, and we're going to be presenting the strategic plan in its entirety on the 21st.
Yes.
At a typical school committee, that's the only item on the agenda unless something pops up that needs to be placed on the agenda, but we are probably 90% done with the strategic plan. It's just putting the key initiatives that will be worked on from, you know, year one, two, and three, and then we'll put a year, and we'll also put the responsible department that would have some level of, you know, responsibility of that particular initiative. So that's something that we have to work on tomorrow. Great team, I'll acknowledge them on the 21st, but I'll tell you, we spent a lot of hours together, great respect for this group, and I think everyone feels that it does reflect what the stakeholders as a whole have identified are, that they're, you know, important to take, so it's kind of exciting, actually. So the, the plan will be delivered, it'll be a framework, and then the consultant that we're using is going to send the document to a desktop publisher to make it presentable, kind of make it look camera-ready and for ahead of the send hour, or whatever we want to do with them, so.
That is good news. Alright, so June 21st, we'll get that report, and I'm not going to say that you just jinxed us, Gary, that of course we're going to have other things come up now that day. Alright, item 8.2 is to discuss the 2022-2023 School Committee Subcommittee assignments. So that is my great honor to do as Chair, to appoint folks to subcommittees and liaison assignments, so I want to thank everybody for getting back to me with your choices, what you would prefer. I've tried really, really hard to get everybody where they want to be, but also to match folks up with their skill sets and whatnot. So I'll send everyone an email with the assignments, but I will read them to you now. So for policy, Jen Benham is going to be the Chair of that committee, and Carrie and Ally will join her as committee members. Thank you both. Finance, I'd actually already appointed this one because they needed to have a meeting. So Ness is the Chair, and Jen Benham is also joining her on that committee, and Matt Cosman, thank you. The Salary Negotiations Subcommittee will be chaired by Carrie Nie. I will be a member of it, as well as Tim Miller Dempsey. And then the, we've had a lot of discussions around the last three committees, which are Special Education, Curriculum, and Wellness, and I'm going to meet with Dr. Adams tomorrow, and we're going to, that's going to be one of the things on our agenda, talking about committee assignments, but I, we feel like there's a way to meld those into one committee or maybe two committees, so for right now, I'm calling it a Special Ed slash Curriculum Subcommittee, which will be, as we stand here today, made up of Tim as the Chair, and Ally and Matt. So hopefully that will stay, if anything changes, and just as we sort of work through what that committee will look like, if you folks, anybody who's been assigned to it is interested, just let me know, or if it feels sort of outside of your scope, we can work through that. There are a lot of liaison assignments, so, you know, I'll go through them really quickly. E-School, Matt will be the liaison for E-School. South School, Jen Benham. Ally, I'm going to have you be the liaison to Plymouth River School, and Ness, I'm going to have you be the liaison for Foster. Carrie, Hingham Middle School, and I will keep Hingham High School for myself, so Tim, you're, you don't, you don't have an assignment, but it's, but, which makes sense. For other liaison assignments, I'd forgotten to list this one, so I stole it for myself, but the liaison to the Student Advisory Committee, that's just the person who sends some copies of our agendas, and I'll continue doing that, and schedules meetings. So we will meet with them every other month of the school year, so hopefully schedule the first meeting in September, although Leah just, Leah Viola, the faculty advisor, just emailed me that they did have their election, so maybe we can try to squeeze a meeting in for the end of the school year. So let me see if I can try to arrange that. Hingham Education Foundation, Tim Legislative Liaison, Carrie, alright, I'm going to also keep Metco. Tim, CPAC, SNAP, Jen, Massachusetts Association of School Committee, School Committee, Special Education, Matt, you'll be that liaison. The Hingham Climate Committee, Ally. Hingham Arts Association, Ally also. Myself, Jen, and Ness will be the AdCom Board of Selectmen Liaisons, and then Ness and I will be the Forecast Liaisons. Budget Task Force, Sustainability Task Force, Ness will remain the member for that, and I think that's covers.
What about the Climate Committee for the town?
Oh, the Climate Committee, Ally.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that's going to be Ally, yes. If anybody can think of any I'm missing, let me know.
I don't know if it specifically is not, but I think Human Rights.
Oh, that's right, I'm so sorry, thank you. Human Rights Commission, yes, thank you, Tim, and you got your, your official appointment So AdCom will be the three of us, yeah, the Executive Board will be the, yes. Alright, it's a lot of assignments, so we're good there?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just on the SPED Subcommittee, SPED Curriculum. I mean, I almost feel ridiculous saying this, because I've, as a public member, was kind of like, oh, there's so many subcommittees, we should, we should reduce the subcommittees. But I guess I would add, I think it'd be good to talk to Dr. Adams about this, but it feels like SPED and curriculum are integrated to some degree, but the connection could lose focus on each of them individually, so I guess I'd at least understand her point of view on how those really can be brought together, and if there's a benefit, or if keeping them separate for another year might make more sense.
Yeah. Just for background, we did have a conversation, the SPED Subcommittee with the CPAC Chairs and Dr. Viness about that, and people seemed really supportive of the idea. The idea, really just the background of it was because the, all Special Ed students are regular ed students, and a lot of the problems of Special Ed start in regular ed, so there really seems to be a need to align regular ed and Special Ed, but that, I appreciate that, that was definitely something that was taken into account, and definitely draw Dr. Adams into it as well.
So I'll circle back with you, with everyone, just to let you know how that conversation goes with Dr. Adams, and we'll figure it out, and we'll talk to Dr. Viness as well. Okay, thank you. Alright, item 8.3 is to discuss proposed changes to school committee policy IKFB, which is the diploma policy, and this is a second read. I was not here for the last meeting, when this was a first read, so I appreciate you all giving me a second to talk about this one, particularly because we just had the graduation, and I have two things that I wonder if the committee would consider for this policy, and I'm sort of thinking to myself, if Liza O'Reilly is watching this right now, she's like, she's been waiting five years for this moment. So, while it is an incredible honor and privilege to hand the students their diploma, and I feel badly even saying it, because I had the privilege of doing that, which means that what I'm about to propose might mean that other people wouldn't have the privilege of doing it, but I'd wondered if the committee would consider having it be the Chair or a design, or the Chairs designate, because it is an amazing moment for the students and their parents, and for the people involved, but I do sort of feel like there's not the connection between the student and the school committee chair, that there would be, say, between like the principal or the faculty advisor or something. So just wanted to put that out. And then the second part of the policy that I feel even more strongly about, honestly, is that I think that it's a great privilege to be able to hand your own child their diploma, and it's such a meaningful moment, and I would very much like to think if we could consider extending that privilege to staff members, to present their diploma to their student upon the graduation, so.
Are you thinking current, current staff members, or?
Or, I haven't thought that far ahead. I guess current, yes, because, yeah, I guess that would be a bit unwieldy to bring. Because that, yeah, I guess that would be a bit unwieldy to bring folks back if they were former. So maybe current staff members to their graduating family member. And I don't know the previous history as to how the committee, how the policy came to be initially. I know it's different in all districts, like some districts, the school committee has to present them. Some districts, the class president gives out the diplomas. So it's sort of all over the place. Different districts do it in different ways. So anyway, those are my, those are my second read thoughts that I'm throwing out there.
I mean, I can add to that. I think the, I think this, giving the staff the ability to hand the diplomas is a nice, it's a nice gesture because they work so hard for our district. So I think that would be great. And then to your point on who is handing the diploma otherwise, I was actually thinking about that this weekend because there were so many kids who didn't know who to go to. And not that we're not important, but they don't know us. And so they looked a little confused as to who, and I got the front row seat, so I could actually see it happen this time. So I would be inclined to ask the students, like a survey, or have it be the principal or, because as, as much as we do, do, the, the kids, they don't know who we are. They don't recognize who we are. And I think it would mean more coming from somebody that they do recognize.
Yeah, we did get that one shout out from one of the speakers, which is very nice, which is very nice, from the Palatikorian.
I like the idea too. I think the one thing I wouldn't want to lose is that the diploma is coming from Hingham Public Schools. It's not coming from Hingham High School. And, you know, Gary mentioned that in a lot of districts, the superintendent speaks at graduation. We don't do that. Like, the only representation at graduation of the district is the school committee chair handing out the diplomas. So I mean, I think there's a way around it, but I think, I wouldn't want to lose that by saying, okay, the principal can do it. Because then it becomes totally Hingham High School. And really, they're supported from, in some cases, preschool through graduation. So that's the one thing.
Yeah, that's a good call. You know, it's interesting because I was thinking, just as you were just saying, like, let the students decide. I'm like, it'd be like amazing if they like, I want their favorite kindergarten teacher who's retiring this year to like come back and do it. But that might become unwieldy as well.
Yeah? If we have a language presented by the chair or designate, that it would be the chair's decision every year whether they want to cast that responsibility onto a certain person, if you left the language that way. And then the other thing that you mentioned, I don't, I don't have a problem with extending it to current staff members as long as it, I think it, it's, I would leave the language and then just add and/or current Hingham Public Schools staff members is what I would include.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Present a diploma to a relative or student and who has lived, they live with the family is the way we have it now for our school committee members.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be like a, they would have to, I believe, live in the home, so their child. Or have lived with it, so it's, it's passed on, so student who has lived with the family at one point.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me. Any administrators have any thoughts on it? That you care to share?
I had this situation brought up at one of the schools. My former district had two high schools, so it's kind of important to have consistency between the two. There was one year that, that students petitioned the school committee to allow their principal to hand the diplomas because it was their, it was, it was the principal's first year of having the kids from freshman all the way to senior and they were connected with that individual. And the school committee did make that provision to allow the principal to do that. But the, I think whatever the committee decides to do, just keep in mind that it's very cumbersome on graduation day to have multiples, multiple people actually be part of the ceremony. So it just makes it, it just makes it really cumbersome. So just consider that, you know.
It's a pretty small, would be a small number of teachers that live within the Hingham and have children who are graduating each year. So I don't think this would be a huge, this would be a couple of people, maybe, maybe a couple of people every year.
And I know that had been Dr. Gallo's hesitation initially, but I think that also came from a place where in years past, any district employee could have their child attending in public schools. But now you have to be a resident to, so I think, you know, where we probably used to have 20 or 30 or 50 employees have students here, we probably don't have nearly that many these days. And I just want to clarify that it would be Hingham Public School employees, so not just faculty. So just, I just want to clarify that, that it would be any employee of the district. So central office or custodians, bus drivers.
And how it's all for, that we don't have to make this, we could have a third read, we could put the changes in and have a third read.
Yeah.
If people want to think about it.
I would kind of like to know how many kids, like how many people would be on the field? And like, how cumbersome would this be? Just see if we can take the, like, maybe last year's class.
Yeah.
Or something.
Yeah.
Just to make sure, because it, I know, I remember that was Dr. Gallo's concern in the past. And that's, we're kind of guessing here, so.
Right. All right, so we'll follow up to see about how many, I wonder, would Susan know? Susan wouldn't know that. I'm trying to think if you would know that. I guess maybe Rick. Rick would have a.
Well, then if you can all put it up to all schools, then we'd have to almost do a survey potentially, right?
And what's the number that we think would, because I agree, that was my initial hesitation, like, I don't know. What would we be comfortable with? 10, 20, 15? Just before we go do a survey, I don't know. Like, if the number is, like, if, if we're like, oh, we're fine with 30, I'm making a number up.
Right.
It's probably not 30, right? If we're, if we're worried, you know, if you introduce five people, then maybe we do. I don't have a strong point of view. I mean, watching it this year, I mean, you throw five or 10 more people there, probably works fine out of 300. It doesn't seem that hard.
All right.
I would be surprised if it's over five.
I would too.
Every year.
They could sit, sit back in the area where the school committee was sitting. And it was, but like when Liza gave up and gave Agnes the diploma, it was very seamless. Like, I don't think that was disruptive at all.
If you judge by the students who are up there who were freshmen who had siblings, you know, it's going to be a different number, obviously. But that didn't add any qualification by having them seated there.
There are so few things that we can, you know, that our teachers do so much and ask for so much. Like, this is such a small, easy thing to do for the teachers. I just, it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Right. Well, and I think to Carrie's point too, that it is, I think that's why I wanted, thought to extend it to all staff as well because it is, the diploma is coming from the district, not just from one person or whatnot. So bring that whole district into the, into the ceremony.
If we have that honor as school committee members, we should allow those actually working in the school to have that honor.
Yes.
I thought that's where Michelle was going to go to start, was taking it away. I was like, that's the whole reason I went.
No, no, I would never take it away. I wouldn't take it away. Because it is, it is, it is, it is a wonderful thing to do. And as a chair, it is, it's so meaningful. And I joked with Matt after the, after the ceremony, saying to him, this is, remember this day because this is what gets you through the other 364 days of this work, right? Faculty and the audience is nodding their heads in agreement. But it is just such a special moment. So again, I don't want to take it away from us, but I think to Ally's point, to extend it out to even more people is what we're trying to do.
We could find out that number.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do you want me to find it out or? I'm not sure how I will, but I.
I mean, this year would have been, what, like three or four?
Okay.
I don't want to say their last names, but like, I'm trying to think of who, three, yeah? Like, last year would have been a little bit more, but not by much.
Is that district-wide?
Yeah.
If I go back like the last three years.
I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, like the.
Rick should know, right?
I don't know that he'd know all employees in the whole district.
Right.
That's the.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I mean, we could technically ask principals. They would probably know.
It's just one more thing for them right now.
I know, it's the end of the year.
We have, we have time.
Yeah, we do have time.
We could wait a couple of months on the specific policy. We could do a third read if we want to get the information from the principals.
Might be good work to do after the 24th.
But even then, then they've got others. I don't know. I guess I would, it sounds like we have a pretty good idea of like, why? I don't know. I would, I would say we vote, but I don't even know if I can say that, but I'm hesitant. I'm hesitant to put extra things on the, you know, we, we, it sounds like we have fairly good confidence that the number's going to be, you know, three, five, eight.
Manageable, right.
You know, it's not going to be 50. Why else am I going to do it?
Can we approve it for next year and then see how it goes? It's another option.
Yeah, we can always add this policy. We'll be reviewed at the end.
Right.
Yeah, we can add that in.
If it goes bad.
It's chaos next year, then.
If it's all a rule, you're like, okay.
That's what most policies are, since something went wrong. But we can add the language in this policy, be, policy will be reviewed. So it would be and/or Hingham Public Schools' current employee. May present, okay. And then we, do we have consensus on designate? Presented by the chair or designate?
I'm going to be quiet on this one because.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think designate. I don't know if we want the chair to be making the suggestion every year because then somebody could be criticized, well, why did you pick me this year? That's.
I was thinking about that as well. I know, that's the only thing that I thought of, is that if you make it the designate and then does all of a sudden the chair get inundated with requests from folks to?
I think that was part of the problem.
Right. And then all of a sudden, you're like, oh, now I can only pick one. Or, no, I want to do it this year because it's my kid's year and, like, my, you know, this is my child's class. And I would, I want to give them out to all of the kids. Could it say, under like special circumstances, the chair may designate? Or, because I was thinking about if someone was retiring, right? Because we talked about it when Dr. Gallo was retiring and Paula Gerard McCandless graduate, or graduating, retiring. But then it was like, no, that's what the policy says, you can't. Yes.
Couldn't you just recognize that at a school committee meeting to, to have that honor bestowed on an individual based on a school committee decision opposed to having a thing in the policy?
That's a good point, because.
Yeah.
Because it's flexible that way, because you never know, something might come up. If you make it that open, you're opening the door.
Right, yes.
That's something I might.
Yeah.
Or you could outright and may designate an alternate.
But I think if we put that in.
Or even just take it completely out?
Yeah, take out the, and then if there's a special circumstance, yeah, we can, the committee can decide.
Yeah, you can vote.
So keep the chair, hands them out, and then put expanded to include current Hingham Public Schools employees.
In the situation I was involved in, it was a petition from the students and it was brought to the school committee.
Okay.
The school committee took action on that petition.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Visit at the end of the year or not?
I don't think you need to say that.
We can, yeah, they can be changed. You can change a policy at any, anytime.
You can always readdress it at the end of the year if you want to.
There's one thing. Last week, when we discussed this, Tim brought up a good point about the school suspension.
Yes.
Line, because it's good, it, it, it's kind of, we could probably take that out because the students are not in school then.
Seniors can't be suspended for their own graduation because they're done with school.
Because they wouldn't, so just to clarify that. So because they wouldn't be under a suspension because school has already gotten out.
Correct.
But there would be disciplinary reasons that they may not.
That's, yeah, that's the question.
Right.
Sometimes students can't walk because of something.
Can we change it to, or is under disciplinary? Or under disciplinary reasons? Or is under disciplinary reasons will not be allowed to participate in the graduation ceremony? That sounds better.
And then can you?
Any student who fails to meet all the graduation requirements or is under disciplinary reasons will not be allowed to participate in the graduation ceremony. I don't even know if we even need this whole sentence in here.
I know, that's what I'm thinking. Is that, do we need that in here? I feel like that's in the handbook.
I think it's had a lot of, so.
Yeah, I think we need that. I mean, if they don't meet the requirements, so they don't graduate.
It's the last sentence that, that is the reason why we met to discuss this policy. It was students who meet the certificate of attainment. That's, that's the important sentence that we wanted to add in here.
So we can keep that, yes.
Wouldn't be the first one necessarily.
And those would be students who completed Hingham's course of study but did not pass the MCAS.
Correct.
Want to read that back to us?
I can read the whole thing. It's not that very long. All right, so diplomas will be signed and presented by the chair of the school committee on behalf of the full committee. A current or former member of the committee and/or Hingham Public Schools' current employee may present a diploma to a relative or student who has lived with the family. Students who meet the certificate of attainment under Massachusetts Department of Education regulations will be permitted to participate in the graduation ceremony. And you should all have access to the changes on the Google Docs in the folder, if you want to.
Thank you.
Look at it.
Did we take any comments on it last time?
No, we, we did not.
Okay.
We can.
Yeah, are there any comments? Does anyone in the audience have anything to add to the conversation?
No, anything online? No, nothing online.
Okay.
There is about a 20-second delay though.
Okay. Um, do we want to take action tonight or do we want to, do people want to do a third read?
Seems like we worked out all the reasons why there would be a third read, so.
Okay, I'm fine. Voting tonight. And we want to make a motion? Do you want to do it? Do you want me to do it? Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed changes to school committee policy IKFB on diplomas as amended to include HPS' current employee may present a diploma to a relative or student who has lived with the family.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yep.
All right, great, that passes unanimously. Fantastic. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, that's great news. 8.4, to discuss proposed changes to school committee policy, I need my glasses for this one, sorry. JICFB, Bullying Prevention. And this is also a second read. Do you want to take us through it, Jen?
I think we went through it last time. We went through all the changes. I didn't know if we wanted to open it up to the public for any comments or questions after the committee has the opportunity.
Uh, I was reading over this again, and on the second page, where I know this is the Mass General Law Language, where it says, whenever the evaluation of the Individualized Education Program Team indicates that the child has a disability that affects its social skills development or that child, the child is vulnerable to bullying, harassment, or teasing because of the child's disability, the IEP shall address the skills and proficiencies needed to avoid and respond to bullying, harassment, and teasing. That seems to put the onus of being bullied on a student with a disability. And I know that we're not changing Mass General Law Language, as much as I'd love to. I was wondering, it seems, I mean, there's a, a feel to that section that says, you know, the I, when the IEP teams meet, they need to discuss what their kid is doing that is causing them to be bullied and they need to learn how to stop doing that so they won't be bullied again. I know that's not exactly what it says, but I was wondering if we might add a sentence for clarification without changing the Mass General Law.
Just for background on that, it wasn't just for the, the target, but also if anyone with an IEP is involved in a bullying incident. The, the goal here was just to trigger a team meeting or the principals, you know, pull in the, the, the team.
or the principals, you know, pull in the, the team chair.
Yeah.
And see if there's something that needs to be done in the IEP, and we're trying to figure out how to do that without, you know, interfering with operations, you know, and, and, you know, telling the teams what to do, or the principals what to do, it's just kind of like, this is what, this is what we want you to think about. So that, that was the thought, I mean, I'm not opposed to adding a sentence, but.
Like the sentence I was thinking of adding, if I can read, see how people feel. Neither a perceived skill deficit nor the existence of an IEP or 504 plan will be used as either a justification for bullying, or as a rationale for reduced consequences for perpetrators.
Can I look at that?
Yeah.
The visual person.
No, that's, I mean, that's a thoughtful addition.
It just, I feel like it's some, something to clarify, that we are not putting the blame of being bullied on the disability of a child.
Absolutely, yeah.
Which I know is not the intention of the law.
Right.
Right, but I know, but it does, but I see what you mean, by the way it reads. Do you have any thoughts on it, Dr. Vines?
The only, the question that I was, mine was, does that belong in policy at all? If it's not part of mass general law, it's part of policy, if it's part of our practices, and part of special education regulation? That would be the only question I would have, is, it does, should it live there?
I believe we took this, the section that we, that references mass general, we pulled that from the intervention plan, too, I believe it's in there as well.
Is it in the mass general law?
The, the sentence that we, not the portion that Tim added, but the previous section that we are adding in here, that is the mass general law, and that is in the current procedural plan online.
I think what we're trying to do is get beyond just the IEP process, cause I mean, the teams do go over those, you know, they go over the, the IEP, and whether a child's vulnerable to bullying, it's when there's an incident, we wanna make sure that it gets addressed, and to make sure, is, is there something that the child needs beyond what's already in the document? Like, just, it's to trigger that discussion, and we talked about that in the policy meeting itself, too. So I, I would, I definitely think it belongs in there, I like Tim's sentence.
I just don't want there to be a perception of that there exists a skill deficit that a child can have, that would make it justified or understandable that they would be bullied in a school.
Yeah.
So.
We also have a section under target assistance, that, like, if the district provide, they shall provide counseling or referral services to appropriate services, I've been thinking of, this is where you would add, um, the, you know, the protection of students, including targets, and I think that they use the word perpetrators, um, something that's, not necessarily, I think we should even take that a whole paragraph and move it down. And then we could add Tim's sentence, if he wants to write it up for me.
Yeah. You can just have it.
You wanna read it again, so everyone can hear it?
Sure. Neither a perceived skill deficit nor the existence of an IEP or 504 plan will be used as either a justification for bullying, or as a rationale for reduced consequences for perpetrators.
I would, my only suggestion would be to remove the word perceived.
Okay.
And it's aggress, it's aggressor, not perpetrator.
Okay, thank you.
The legislative language is target and aggressor.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I didn't like that word.
I know, they have it.
But it's in that target.
No pups, right? Be careful what we call children.
And then sometimes places they use victim as opposed to target.
It should always be target and aggressor.
Right. In MGL it says, do you mean, or in our policy?
Well, MGL, they use the word victim, and then they define victim. And we don't have, actually, we don't have the definition of victim in our policy, but it is in the law, though, the procedural plan.
Jen, I think, so you were suggesting?
Am I backwards?
Sorry, no, no, you're right, I'm sorry, I was, I was going back to the target assistance, moving it down there, the thing is, it's not just applying to targets, so I'm wondering if we put it.
Oh, I meant the whole paragraph, moving it some, not necessarily under that target assistance category, but I feel like where it is right now.
Maybe with the bullying prevention intervention plan?
I'm sorry, I was thinking two steps ahead. Moving it under. And what about investigation procedures?
Be there, too.
Would that be okay?
Moving it down to investigation procedures?
And then adding Tim's sentence, and then removing. Changing those two words.
Is it happening before the investigation?
I know, that's what I was thinking, cause I think it is, right, it's not, you're not only doing that when you're doing investigation, right? You're planning for, yeah, correct, that it's, that, this is, this is part of the IEP process, not just if there's an investigation, correct?
Right, and it's all related, and it's all done with stuff, which is. Like, the more specific you get in the policy, the more challenging it's, it's going to become, because it's not that black and white. So I defer to you, but the more specific you get in terms of that language, the harder it's going to be, because it's not just because a student has a disability, it's that they have a disability, and they have a skill deficit in an area that either makes them more vulnerable to being a target or an aggressor. It's, it's not just the existence of a deficit.
Right.
It's deficits in particular developmental areas, so it's not that general.
But all this is doing is triggering the team to look at it, and see whether the disability is the, you know, is there something that needs to be addressed in the IEP, that either contributed to what happened, you know, that, that's what we're trying to get at, is not.
Right, but it's usually based in evaluation, so a student can engage in these behaviors and be either one, and, and not have it have anything to do with their disability.
Right.
So it would, the deficit identification is tied to evaluation, so it could trigger a lot of things, it could trigger a reconvene, it could trigger an evaluation, it could trigger support from a behavior analyst, like, it, it could be any number of things, it's not going to be this equals this.
That would be a team decision, as far as what the next steps would be, right?
It, it would be, and it, it would be.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's kind of what we're trying to get to, is to make sure that it triggers something, cause it, it hasn't always, in the past.
I, I don't know, I couldn't tell you that it's, every single circumstance triggers exactly the same thing.
No, it, it needs to trigger something.
I defer to you.
Yeah, okay.
So Carrie, I just, are you thinking that if the child was bullied, that it would immediately trigger some of a team meeting, as opposed to it being brought up at the next?
We're trying to stay, I think, yeah, I think we're trying to, yeah, yeah, we don't wanna wait till the next IEP meeting, I think, is the whole, the whole point of it, not, yeah.
It just sounds like process, so.
I just wanna, if the policy is reflective of the law, then that's.
Yeah, which is what we have, right?
Satisfactory, but I wouldn't wanna just prescribe what teams should be doing when they're making individual determinations.
Which is what we're trying to avoid, definitely, yeah, but I liked Tim's language, just because it.
But does my language muddy the waters? In terms of.
I don't believe so.
Okay. We can create the policies, but you're the one that has to live with them, so, I think that's why we're deferring to you a lot.
I, I mean, I've shared my opinion.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
There is skill deficit, nor the existence of an IEP. Do you wanna read it again, everyone?
Yeah. And where are you moving it to?
Well, first, the signs would go at the end of teasing, go after teasing, in the red, and then we would move the whole paragraph to under prevention intervention plan, right here.
That seems better, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna do that first.
So it's not that we're adding anything, this is just mass general law, we're just specifying that, that's a trigger.
Mm-hmm.
For the IEP meeting, or the team to meet.
Yeah, to discuss it, to figure out what next steps are.
Sure. Neither a skill deficit nor the existence of an IEP or 504 plan, of an IEP or 504 plan, will be used as either a justification for bullying, or as a rationale, or as a rationale for reduced consequences for aggressors.
Everyone should be able to see it in there, document.
Do you have any reservations, Jamie?
No.
No?
No, we were just looking at the, we wanted to see it.
Oh, yeah.
Can you see it on that?
It's the part in red, right?
Yep.
Yep.
That, that happens at every single team meeting, that determination.
Okay. Don't we see if there's any comments? Audience? Do you want to?
Yes.
While we're typing and reopening the folders, anyone in the audience have any comments on this agenda item? If no, we'll look online, see if there's any. And do we need to give it just a little delay? Okay. Sorry, Jen, you're pulling like triple duty over there, typing, looking on this thing.
I pulled up the, sorry, I pulled up the marker, just in case I couldn't see the comments, but there is nothing. I think we're, okay.
Alright. Do you wanna take action? Are we, folks ready, are they comfortable with the revisions?
Yeah.
Yeah? I'll take a motion.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I hope I can ask this, because, as an agenda item, the, since we discussed the prevention intervention plan, will, this being updated, cause it's, I believe it's been, is the plan for it to be updated, or just reviewed, I believe the language is biannually, so every two years, and it appears it's been a while, and two.
Well, these will be updated, so.
Yeah.
That has to happen.
Okay. That's, yeah, that was my, my hope, is that it, that that can happen next year, that next school year?
On Dr. Adams' agenda.
Thank you, thank you very much.
No, that's great, okay, so it is on, it is on Dr. Adams' agenda, one of the long list of things.
And can we add the handbooks to her agenda as well?
Oh, yes, yeah, you know what, actually, it ties a little bit to the policies, I think, particularly because we've made a lot of changes to the policies this year, when do the handbooks come, when would we expect, when do you think, or if you know, the school committee expect to see the handbooks for next school year?
We were shooting for August, because the, the policy manual revisions were quite helpful, but what I think what we're trying to target is the procedures that go along with those policies, that then talk about how the administration or the, the school leadership implement the policy, and so we did contract with somebody to help us out, they did a crosswalk, so we, now we know what policies are missing procedures, what, and the next task is really to write the procedure, but the step one was to cross-reference the existing policies, make sure all the updated policies were put in, and then step two was to reexamine the discipline codes, to ensure alignment with restorative practices, and so there was some work that had to get done over the summer, so we were targeting for August. With the transitions, I'm not sure, I think August is still a reasonable timeframe, with the crosswalks are done, the procedures just have to really be written, and we, in some instances, there are some sample procedures that we can use, those are a little different than policy, where they don't require committee voting, they're more administrative implementation of that policy. The, sorry, I feel like I'm rambling, but the question was when?
Yep.
Probably, hopefully sometime in August, but I think discussing with Dr. Adams to ensure it aligns with her timeline, I think is reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know when they go to press?
They have to, I'd have to double check that we still print them in hard copy.
Oh.
I think we transitioned at one point to hard copy printing the sign-offs, but not necessarily hard copy printing, to be more environmentally friendly, as a move from our green team from the high school.
Yeah.
So I'd have to go back and double check. I don't know that we necessarily, I know we print some in various languages, of the home language of the families, but beyond that, I'm not sure that we print hard copies of handbooks, anyone know? Looking to my audience, no?
I don't think I've seen a printed copy.
Yeah, I think we transitioned, I think since COVID, maybe, the year before COVID, we, we transitioned, yeah.
That's what I was hoping.
More environmentally friendly.
Yes, well, no, and it helps.
Cause they would end up in the parking lots.
Yeah, exactly.
After open houses.
Right, and it definitely helps with the timeline, I was thinking, because, oh, if they have to go to press, you know, if they have to go print it before, but, so that's perfect, okay, great, so I will add that to the list of things Dr. Adams about.
But it is, we are discussing it tomorrow morning with the building principals.
Okay.
So that is on, we, they, it's not something that they're unaware of, it's just execution wise, we need to just coordinate.
Are the elementary schools all coordinating together?
With one, yeah, they'll be, the vision is to have common backs, to have consistent collection of applicable policies and procedure from the district, but then have the front be unique to the individual schools, so there'll be a common back, or a common front with different sections, but under bus drop-off and pickup, it might have different procedures across the four elementary schools, but the idea is to have common sections, common information contained in all of them, but have them be tailored a little bit to each individual school.
So they would, ideally, will be ready for the start of the new school year?
Yeah, that's the goal, yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you, oh, somebody from the audience has a, come on up, if you can just state your name and your address?
I'm Barbie Lynch, through Westmoreland Road, I just had a question for Dr. Willow, I'll send to you, or, it sounds like you do the procedural plans, is there a way to get in advance, before they're printed, copies of them to review as a stakeholder of the procedures for the schools?
Well, the committee will get them, so we, so the school committee has to review and approve them, so they would be available, so we'll discuss them at a committee meeting, so you could get a copy of it at the committee.
Is there also, my last question would be, is there a way, before they get completely put in place, is there a way as the community that we could have a voice on any of the procedures?
So I, I think the best way to do that is depending on the school, is that the school council generally works with the principal to make revisions to handbooks, and not only student-parent handbooks, but also faculty handbooks each year, and so we can certainly give you an advanced copy, but beyond that, in terms of input, the best way to do that is to advocate or work with your school council, so those are the parents who are elected by the, I think the PTOs, maybe, to then work with the buildings on the implementation of the school, the district, the school improvement plans, and update the handbooks annually, and so that's the best avenue, that's not to say you can always express your opinion, right, to the building leaders, but a more formal route would be through the school council.
Okay, because, and, and since there are some procedures that are across the board for all of Hingham Public Schools, that would be the ones that I would probably be asking more, that's what I mean, cause it's.
Oh, sure.
As opposed to specific, each specific school, I guess more procedural plans for the district for what you are looking for, unless that's part of like the strategic plan of what you, I don't know.
Fair, so I think we could certainly, I could talk to the principals tomorrow about some kind of a public comment period, we might put it up just to get feedback, but the procedures are relative to school committee policy, so there's not a, not that there's not a lot of room for wiggle, but there, there's, there's some context around, like, there's a bullying policy, and then we have to have a procedure that says, here's how we implement that policy.
I think that's what I'm looking for, is like, I have policies, and I'm just curious to see what.
The procedures, so that's part of what we're working on, maybe, is they don't necessarily exist, so when the new policies were adopted, the, the naming, not to bore anybody, but the naming constructs and conventions. So when the new policies were adopted, the, the naming, not to bore anybody, but the naming constructs and conventions shifted. So we went from numerical to alphabetical and the coding changed. So we just finished a crosswalk of here's what we have existing in our handbooks right now, which are all numerically based policies. And then to cross that walk that with the new structure from the National School Board Association, which is alphabetical. So that, that crosswalk is done, and now we've identified those policies that don't necessarily have new procedures. And the task in front of us right now is then writing all of those procedures for the, now, in some instances, the MASE policies that we adopted have draft procedures that go with them. But in some instances, we're having to develop them on our own. That's what has taken us a bit of time. But we haven't quite got there yet for all of them.
Okay, I know that you're stepping down. Congratulations, a new position.
Thank you.
Since you're stepping down, who would I contact maybe to look further into this? Is it still, would then be the PTO or?
No, I might suggest Dr. Adams, our incoming superintendent, she'll starting July 1, and, and absolutely, because Dr. Maestus is retiring as is John, so there's going to be a bit of a transition in central office, but Dr. Adams is your best bet.
Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Becky Lynch commented that we need printed copies. And then she also commented that community members should be allowed to see the draft so that we can bring our questions and ideas to our school council. Which is a good point, what we were just discussing.
I, I think we're always available to print copies for people that request them, but it's not, we're not printing 4,000 handbooks.
But if they requested a copy.
Absolutely, we'll give them whatever they like, yep. But as a general practice, we're trying to be more environmentally sound. Don't give it, don't get John started. Let's not get on this wrong. We're more than happy. Yeah, but any, any family that would, would like a hard copy, we're more than happy to give it to you, we're also able to do it. Have it translated, have it in larger prints, and we're happy to accommodate any family, but as a general rule, we generally will not be making paper copies.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so if we're good, does someone want to make a motion?
I will make the motion, all right. Okay. I'm trying to find all the changes that we have on here. All right, I will make a motion to approve school committee policy JICFB bullying prevention with the proposed additional amended changes. That adds the following sentence, neither a skill deficit nor the existence of an IEP or 504 plan will be used as either justification or bullying, it's irrational for reduced consequence for aggressors. Is the added language.
I'll second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? All right, that passes unanimously as well. Great, thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for the policy subcommittee for putting that all together. Hopefully next year's policy subcommittee has a little less to do, you guys did an amazing job going through all those policies this year. All right, item 8.5 is a fiscal 23 budget update, so I'm assuming that is Mr. Ferris?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to take a few minutes to give you a quick update on the FY '23 budget. If the recommended agcon budget was $61,826,903. And we were short at one point, right, because they, there were $850,000 worth of initiatives that the budget for FY '23 wanted. And with that, since that point of time, we've actually, in, in changes relative to the budget, we needed 850, we've got $582,000 in right now. At, on March 31, uh, March 21, I gave a, a budget update, and at that point, we had 325 of that 850. So you see that we've gone to 582 now. In addition to the, and, and how we did that really is with, with changes that we knew, we had additional retirements that came in, we've done some restructuring for facilities. I've actually later on, I'm going to present to you a, a bid for special ed vans that we've, you know, would purchase with NDA via funds for this year, which would essentially avoid the lease costs that we would have on a recurring basis. Also some restructuring within, within faculty, where there's a position that's retiring that we won't need to replace. So there's a, a number of items, and those items will continue to come between now and the end of the year. So we are, we're, we're up to 582,903 now. There's a gap of 267,000, which is not really a significant gap at this point in time. The, because I do believe that all of that will, will come. And, and that will come as a result of, there'll be additional resignations, there will be some churn of employees. The, if we, if we need, we have IDA grants that we can call on to, you know, raise, you know, whether we need a hundred thousand, there's a lot of grant money that's being rolled over, there's some Metco grant money that's being rolled over as well. So we will be able to fill that gap right to the 850, so all the hiring that we're doing right now and everything that we planned is in fact doable. We've advanced some purchases of textbooks from the previous, you know, for, that, that we had planned for last year. So, you know, I think the great news is that the FY '23 budget is intact, there's money there, just as we design that budget, it will be able to be implemented. And, you know, before we go, there'll be a balanced budget. So, so we're in good shape there. In '22, we're also in, in, in good shape at this point. I'm not projecting much of a surplus. You know, after I asked you to do a bid for me, you have $158,000, but that's a 48-hour item. But we, we have, last time I gave a forecast and I told you we advanced a lot of, you know, capital items and like, of projects that were shovel-ready, ready to go, and, you know, we're in process of getting those things done. We've, you know, purchased some of the assessment software, we've purchased some other softwares that Dr. Adams wanted. And, you know, so by and large, we've done a really good job with that surplus. And, and I'm, I'm happy to say that, in my view, it's all very productive, good purchases. There's not stuff sitting on shelves. I just recently talked about paper, you know, when we talked about printing, we did open a paper bid today and I was staggered. All right, I mean, it was, we typically pay about $30 a carton for paper, the bid came in at $49. That's a, that's 5,000 sheets. Forty-nine thousand, $49 for 5,000 sheets. That's a, that's a real sizable chunk. We typically would spend about $50,000 worth of paper, 50 to 60, so that's an $83,000 purchase that we typically do around this time of year, so. So by and large, a lot of the surplus and the energy prices, they have not resolved, the surplus has all but disappeared. And, you know, but, but we're, we'll still be coming in at a, at a good level on that budget. And, you know, to the extent that you did empower me to, you know, make some other journal entries, like to, to hit the special ed reserve for a few dollars if needed, up to 100,000 or whatever level you would feel appropriate. I know right after we had the last forecast, Suzanne came to me and said that we're aware of another family moving up where that, um, the, the watch list has increased by three. So, you know, those are possibilities too. Not a risk for the budget, because we do have, we do have grant money and it's manageable, and Ayesha knows about how to manage a budget as well, so I think we're going to be in very good shape.
Yeah.
So can you share some context around the special ed? So we had talked about that at the last session, at the last meeting, that for the first time since the special ed reserve was set up, we are going to have to use it this year. And that's in the tune of like 116,000. So I think last meeting you were proposing that we make a transfer. We had discussed at our finance subcommittee meeting whether to recommend that. And given it had never been used before, we went back and forth, but because of this family that's moving up from Texas, we thought that need, that might need to be used again, so that is something that we should possibly enable John to do and take a vote on, to allow him to do before the end of June, to make a transfer to that special ed reserve fund.
Right, and I would say that's an up to amount and not necessarily have to happen, right? So, you know, we have $400,000 in that reserve account, we know we have 115 of known tuitions that was not projected in the original special ed budget when we did it, because we didn't know about the students and things change after we present the budget. And we know we have the watch list of, you know, it was $400,000 last time, I think, it may grow a little bit more, you know, with these new students. They won't all happen. They, that, that we sort of know, they won't all happen. If they did all happen, then it's not going to be, it wouldn't be wrong to use rolled over grant money, so I think we'll be comfortable. So I would like the, some flexibility to move some of the money if, if needed, but not necessarily have to move the money.
Up to 100?
Up to 100. I think this is what we discussed at the finance subcommittee meeting, yeah.
If there is, if there is, if there is, yeah. And it's a big if right now. I'm in a good place.
Yeah, so that would be a transfer that would happen right at the end of June.
Do we need to vote on that?
I believe we do. Yeah, do we vote on that?
Yeah, we don't have it on the.
I don't, yeah. I mean, well, maybe we could talk about it at the 21st.
Yeah, it's just, you know, an authorization of up to so much money to authorize me to do that if necessary, but that would be great.
Correct. Any other questions from committee members?
Yeah, can I just, I just want to play back. So a couple weeks ago, again, it's a forecast, we don't know, maybe 170K was, I think, the number you threw out. I think what I'm hearing now is maybe that was high, wasn't, sorry, that wasn't high necessarily, but we're two weeks later, and you think it's now lower than that.
Oh, yeah.
And things can still change over the next three weeks.
So we, we have, we have an asbestos abatement issue that, that discovered, we discovered at the depot, the garage bays, you know, it's owned by the town really, right, so we manage it. And there's a significant wall that sort of had a curtain on it of asbestos that's friable, that has to be removed, that's $38,000. This paper bid just came in about 25 more than what I had forecasted. There's 25,000, and there's other items that, that, you know, have developed as we've been closing out the year. We did keep POs open, so we had, you know, new POs coming, and all of a sudden, somebody has something that they, that they need to purchase, so, you know, we look at it, make sure it's a, it's a reasonable purchase and, and, you know, we authorize that. So, yeah, that is significantly whittled, Matt, at this point. If, you know, the last time I took a look at the numbers, I'm in a negative state, which I like to be in a negative state. Okay, because we will close POs and money will appear, but, you know, we're, we're in a good place right now.
Yeah, all right, so we, any other questions from the committee? All right, any from the public?
I am Heidi Vino, I'm the nurse at Foster School and the nurse coordinator for the district. And I just wanted to ask, I guess, inquire as to whether or not the proposal that was made twice by the nurses with regards to this, you know, access that was there on May 23rd, that doesn't seem to be there anymore. Was there any discussion about nursing staffing and making the temporary float nurse position that we have right now into a permanent position, which we had requested? I never received any feedback from anyone, so we're here hopefully to, you know, participate in some kind of a discussion, although it sounds like perhaps things are not discussable at this point, but we're very disappointed to hear that. We feel strongly that we're, you know, an integral part of the Hingham Public Schools and have proven that in the past two years during this pandemic, and we are struggling, and we would like your support.
I don't know, Dr. Maestus, if you.
I've been struggling with rest. Well, one of the things that we have with the budget is anything that we put in the budget should be presented in October, so it's really difficult at this, at this stage of the game.
We didn't know what we were dealing with.
Yeah, well, I, I understand that, I, I've been working with you all, and I think I've done a lot to try to support our nurses, and I want to thank you all for coming tonight. But I will tell you that it's very challenging, especially for staff that have year after year ramifications to add a, a budget item that has, you know, an expense from one year to the next. So when we're talking about end of the year money, it's very difficult to attach staff to that for a number of reasons. But it does not by any means minimize what we feel is important for our students to have through the auspices of our school health services. We have had conversations, I have had conversations with incoming superintendent about how crucial the support is for the nurses in our district. The, you know, I, I don't, I don't want people to have this impression that there's money sitting around and that there's money available to be able to put towards positions, and that is not at all what these discussions have been. You know, everything that we're dealing with now is, is items that were needed in the district, and we don't know exactly, as you heard from John tonight, we didn't know exactly what's going to be available left in the school year. And it's, it's extremely not a great practice to purchase staff with, and with, with money that might be left over. That's not what we do, and that's not responsible budget building. And that's one of the things that I tried to mention, I mentioned it to, you know, this to schools and principals and program directors for years. If you have a need in staff, we need to know it when we build the budget, because it has an opportunity to survive the process, because we have to sell positions. Just like any position that came up before and got approved, there's a campaign that goes along with every single one of those. So it's difficult for us now to say, well, we need this, we, we understand that you need it, we understand that there's a void. But I will work with Dr. Adams for the remainder of my time, she's very well aware of the situation. But again, money is one of those things that we're working with to try to close the books for this year, and I don't know what's available. I don't know what we have available to actually take and, you know, purchase another staff member. So we'll continue to work at it, Heidi, and I appreciate you coming tonight and expressing your concern. I do believe I did respond to you with an email that was specific about when positions were added to the budget, and that's in October for November presentation. So if, I believe I did send that to you.
My, my recollection was we already finished the budget, and then, you know, to hear your discussion at the May 23 meeting about $170,000 and Mr. Hudson saying what can we do with this money, we need to use it effectively. To us, using it effectively is helping the students in Hingham Public Schools, and the nurses do that directly every day. So that's where that renewed proposal came from, you know. I'm new at this position, I don't know how these things work, never would have thought in October that I needed to present such an item to this whole committee. October was the start of the chaos for us. So, you know, we're putting it out here, this is where we stand, we are struggling. We, you know, respectfully request that this position be addressed, thought about, put on the books, whatever the, the protocol is, so that hopefully in the future, you know, we can have some, some list of feeling like somebody, not that you don't care. Feeling appreciated and feeling like we can do our job the way they're supposed to be done. We're flying by the seat of our pants this year, and kids can suffer.
And I appreciate that, Heidi. I think that I'm, I'm not putting a spotlight on me, but I'd like you to recall the meetings that I've had with the nurses, I'd like you to recall the things that have happened for your department, and I put a lot of effort into, into this.
And we appreciate that, and we appreciate having a float nurse this year, which is valuable, which is why we just realized this position that we really feel strongly is to be made a part of the position.
Yeah, Carrie?
So I just wanted to clarify too, the, the projected surplus that we've been discussing has to be spent by June 30th this year, so it would not be appropriate to do that with that money. But, I mean, I, I would just echo, please bring it forward next fall when we start building the budget, because it is important, and you really kept everything going this year, so.
Yeah, that I can go on the list?
Yeah. Yeah.
Every, every year that goes on to, here's an addition that we need. So I'm sure, you know, Ayesha will talk about it and it'll be on the list. I mean, it's on my list already, but it's not on my list for '23. It's on my list for '24. I won't be doing it, but it's on the list.
And I, I would think that if it is a, a true need, I think we should continue the conversation this summer when Dr. Adams gets here to figure out what that looks like with the kids and the nurses this year. We've got additional ESER funds and this sounds like something that we could use because it is COVID related. So ESER we've got for two more years and if that covers us for two more years, that's a possibility. So that could be on the shortlist. So something that we could deal with in September. And then if we needed it long term, we could talk about it in October.
Yeah, and the, the ESER, the ESER could be available. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
You know, whenever the committee thinks it should be available.
Yeah, I think that is a great point. I was wondering that as well, if the ESER funding would be available because it can be used for funding positions. Clearly this is COVID related. It may be a position that is ultimately becomes permanent, right? But also could be a position that, you know, over the next couple of years, the necessity for it goes away. So maybe ESER funding is the right way to go with it. So maybe that's something the finance subcommittee can take up as well? And we'll talk with Dr. Adams?
It's in the social emotional needs too. So, you know, it's, it's a good, it's not a bad, it's not, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
You know, you'll have, you have monies that you're going to have to figure out how to spend appropriately, of course.
Right.
We could fund, we could use that ESER money for funded for one, two years at a time.
Two years maximum, yeah. And then if, hopefully the COVID related issues that require the floating nurse end up not being needed, but if it is needed, something that could go on the budget that in October.
Just evaluate at the end of two years.
ESER is not just COVID related, right? ESER is very widely, there's certain amount, 20% on, on learning loss. And you want so much on social emotional after that. You don't want to go into construction because it'll be a pain to spend it. But, you know, after those two components, you're pretty free on how you would like to spend that.
Right, good.
Mrs. Moore for the nurses. I, I have talked to, to Dr. Adams about needs for the department that go beyond having a float nurse or having, we have talked about it. So I don't want them to, I don't want you to get the wrong idea that, you know, this isn't an important item by any means. So Dr. Adams is aware, we've talked about it. We've talked about the strategy that was brought up tonight, but we'll see how far we can get with it.
Thank you, we appreciate your consideration.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here and thank you for everything you do every day, but particularly over the last two years. Definitely not what school nurses thought they'd be signing up for when they became school nurses. So it is greatly appreciated and I, I do know the committee and the administration sincerely means that. So we will do everything we can to try to make this more palatable. And if that includes finding a way to fund the floating nurse, we'll try to find a way to do that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on that? Is there anything on the YouTube?
Yep.
Is that it for your update?
That's it, I'm, I'm done with the budget update, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, number nine, new business. We have a number of field trips to look at. So 9.1 is to discuss a proposed field trip to New York City in October of 2022 and act as appropriate. Are you presenting these, Dr. Mastis?
I am not.
Oh, okay.
Members here that have information that I don't.
Okay, perfect. All right, if there's, oh, Mrs. Pollard. Yes, we'll start with you. Hello.
So in another time, I might be presenting a proposal to take a trip to China.
I was going to say.
But I don't think that that's in the cards in the near future. So Rose Papuga, who's the art coordinator, and I have worked together to come up with a plan where we're going to do, hopefully with your approval, a dual trip that will involve students in Chinese and students in the art department. We're going to share some of the costs because we can share buses and we can share hotels. And then once we're in the city, we'll be going off in separate directions with the goal from the Chinese perspective to be to visit Chinatown. There's a great museum, the Museum of the Chinese in America. We're going to get a chance to look at the diaspora experience of Chinese immigrants. And the art students will visit lots and lots of museums and do workshops. And I think it will be really great. I don't know if you need more information than that.
Probably, not at this moment. Just for the record, this is Erica Pollard, Department Ed for Foreign Languages, World Languages at the Hingham Public Schools. I mean, New York City is not a trip to China, but it is a fabulous place to go. I know two of your former students who would be happy to help you while you're there if you're interested.
Yeah, we'll have to get a visit going.
Yes.
The other sort of positive part of this is that I'm hoping that we will have over the course of the next couple of years, trips that come in at a variety of price points for kids. So this is more of a long weekend trip, a little bit more accessible than a week and a half in China would have been.
Mm-hmm, yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee on the proposed trip?
I mean, just a general question for, our committee is in the, you know, certainly since February decided to take a stand that we're going to follow the state's sort of guidelines in terms of COVID protocols. Or I just want to make that explicit. We're planning on continuing to follow whatever state guidance and the state doesn't have guidance about required, does not have required, any guidance about requiring a vaccine for field trips or overnight trips?
Correct, yes.
So I just want to say the quiet part out loud because I know people are here for that.
Exactly, yes.
When we discuss with families, we'll need to make sure to purchase cancel for any reason insurance, which is offered by pretty much all companies, just because the world is a little more unpredictable than it used to be.
Yes.
And I would just say with the middle school field trip to DC that just happened, Grand Classroom did a great job of navigating the changing scope of this and they're running this trip too, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is, is New York requiring anything for art museums or any of the places you're visiting? If we?
So some of them are requiring for vaccination, some individual museums. So students would need to provide that.
Okay. And you'll make that clear to the students on the trip as, before they sign up, okay?
Yes, thank you.
But for those, those stu-, students who go on the trip, they just couldn't go into certain museums?
Correct, so there might be parts of the trip that they could participate in and other parts they couldn't without being vaccinated.
Makes sense.
Any other questions?
Is there any financial assistance being offered for students who need it? So the, we've done it in a couple of ways in the past.
Erica, I'm sorry, can you, do you mind coming to the mic so folks at home can hear?
Yeah.
Sorry, nobody at home can hear me, I guess. We've done that in a couple of ways in the past. The Global Citizenship Program has a scholarship fund that they use for this kind of thing when students apply. And I believe that some of it has been funded out of their high school related funds, but I'm not entirely sure how that has happened in the past. I know that we've had students be offered financial assistance. I'm just not 100% sure where the money came from.
So the students would, they would reach out to you or the?
Yeah, so the Global Citizenship Program, I should stop walking away. I'll just stay. The Global Citizenship Program has four advisors and I'm one of them. So we'll be sort of making a push in the spring to make kids aware now that travel is happening again that this, that this assistance is, assistance is available if they need it.
Thank you. Any other, I think, I think you're safe. Any other questions?
Away from back.
I'll take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed field trip to New York City in October 2022.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? No, great, unanimously approved, great. You're welcome, thank you. Thank you, seriously, thank you for hosting these field trips to all of you educators and staff members who do it because it is above and beyond the call of duty. And it, but it is such an amazing portion of the student's educational experience, so thank you. All right, item 9.2 is to discuss a proposed field trip to Costa Rica in February of 2023 and act as appropriate. Hello?
Hi, my name is Alicia Campbell. I am a biology and oceanography teacher at Hingham High School. And I am proposing a trip for February vacation of next year to Costa Rica. It is mostly science related, although I will not turn anyone away. Anyone is welcome to join us. One major highlight that I am extremely excited about is getting the students into the field to do research with some resident biologists in Costa Rica. We would be staying in some research dorms with the scientists, learning about their research that they're doing and then get the opportunity to actually do the research with these scientists and be part of their research projects that they are working on. We will do that. We also have a couple other kind of parts of the trip as well. Of course, Costa Rica, if you know anything about Costa Rica, there's a lot of adventure that goes on there. So we'll kind of work first and then do a little bit of play later. We'll do our research in the field and then we'll get to explore the variety of landscapes that there are in Costa Rica with some whitewater rafting, some zip lining, some canyoning. So looking at the various landscape that's around. And then to throw another thing in there, we'll also do some service projects as well. So we'll be working with, a couple of the proposed thoughts are working with a farm that does a lot of sustainability work and helping out with rehabilitating and doing some restoration of some of the rainforest that's there. We hope to take a trip to a local school so we can see what that kind of is like and give the students an opportunity to take a look at a variety of different kind of avenues in Costa Rica. So doing some science research, some adventure, as well as a little bit of service and some culture. There will be some Spanish language in there, but you don't need to know Spanish. So it is definitely a wide variety of students that would be able to join us on the trip. Thank you. And I'll stay here so I don't have to give.
Thank you. Good call, Alicia. Thank you. Yes, lesson learned. Go ahead, Jen.
Also grant through Grand Classroom.
Yes.
Insurance is all provided.
Yes, yes, so this is Run Through Grand Classroom, who has done a variety of trips, just did the DC one. And actually, which will be amazing, there is a previous former Hingham Public School science teacher who works with Grand Classroom, Greg Wachelhausen. And I've been working closely with him and he will actually be going on the trip with us. So that will be great to have him as just a Grand Classroom resource, but also as a former teacher and educator. So he will be there for all of that. Grand Classroom has so many things in place. They have health and dental insurance. They do have the travel protection that families are able to purchase if they would like to. We have made that known as long as this gets approved. So we've made that known to them and we'll continue to make that known to families that there is the possibility if they want to join that travel insurance kind of protection so that they have that if they would like to purchase that.
Thank you. Any to do on it?
I mean, I assume traveling back to the US, the, the way the rules require now is that they would need to be tested, COVID tested. So I'm assuming Grand Classroom would cover that.
Yes, so we'll be following along with, yes, regulations for Costa Rica, regulations for here. And yes, Grand Classroom will be in charge of kind of making sure that all of the vaccination requirements and things are all set up and good to go.
Do you want to ask about? You got, go.
Um, so similar to Erica, I know that there are options for students specifically through me or through Grand Classroom specifically, not that I'm aware of, but there is the GCP program. And there is a possibility, if the students are interested, potentially we'll do some fundraising efforts or something to try to help with the costs. But same thing, I know there is funds available, but where exactly those come from? I'll piggyback with Erica and find that out.
Any other questions? All right, take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed field trip to Costa Rica in February 2023.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? No, all right, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 9.3, to discuss a proposed field trip to France in April of '23 and act as appropriate.
I can't tell which one I want to go on.
I know. Which one do we get to go to?
Yeah.
I'm thinking yours.
Good evening, my name is Alec Porter. I'm a high school French teacher. And this trip, actually, we had everything lined up in 2019. We, this was an exchange, actually, it's a little misleading. It does say field trip to France in April, but we're hoping to have an exchange whereby students would, from France would come and stay with Hingham families in October. And then we would go and stay ideally with those same families in April. And as I said, we had this trip all buttoned up, ready to go. We had approval, we had families on both sides of the Atlantic, we had dates. What we didn't have was the pandemic. And of course, then that hit and we had to put everything on the back burner. So here we are now three years later. The only thing that has changed is the region of France. So initially, when we, back in 2019, we were going to be having an exchange, excuse me, with a school in northeast France near the Belgian border. That has since changed and is now going to be in the southwest France near Bordeaux, which frankly, I think the time of April, excuse me, the time of year they would be going is a, frankly, it's a much nicer time of year and a much nicer region in terms of the weather. So what it would entail would be a two-part program. As I said, the French students would come here in October. Tentative dates would be October 22nd to November 1st because we want to make sure that they can experience Halloween, the American way, not just the French way. And then we would, and the student age would be sophomores, maybe juniors. And then we would, they would put together their itinerary. They would stay with Hingham families. They would go into Boston, they might have an overnight trip to New York. But the total time here would be eight, nine, maybe as many, as long as 10 days. And then we, and of course, they would come to school. And they would shadow their American hosts. They would see what life is like in a typical American high school. They would go to American high school events, football, lacrosse, you know, obviously lacrosse is in the, it's in October, but you understand what I mean. Just to see what life is like in America. And then we would do the same in April. And we would go and we would stay with the families and do, follow a similar pattern or similar itinerary. The students would stay with families, they would go to the school, they would shadow their French host. And then we would also be able to go to Paris for a couple of days, as well as a visit some of the region down in the southwest of France towards the Spanish border. So this company is actually, we are going through Promateur, which is a company we've worked with extensively in the past. They're always the one that, they organize the eighth grade trip to Quebec City. We have worked with them in the past. As I said, they are a very, very reputable company, very easy to work with, very flexible. And that's why they were the ones who actually came to us to say, in addition to school trips, we are now offering proposing exchanges. So they would be doing the background, in background checks, if you like, on the families and making sure that students on both sides of the Atlantic would be safe and welcomed and sheltered. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Go to the same, same questions.
The financial aid, I believe, I will certainly echo what has been said about GCP. But I believe Promateur, and I will confirm this, I believe they do have a financial aid package, which I can get more details on because it is a different organization than the Grand Classroom. And the benefit, I will say, to an exchange, not that this should be the only benefit, but generally speaking, because it involves shorter hotel stays as well as fewer trips to restaurants, that generally speaking, the cost of a, let's say, a 10-day trip would be lower than, say, an eight, nine, 10-day trip to, and I'm using this just as an example, the most recent trip to Vienna for the music department, which, you know, was the price that it was, understandably, of course, but as I said, because when you're staying in hotels the entire time and you're going to far more restaurants, with a homestay, that's not the case.
And with the homestay, it's such an amazing experience. I did a homestay exchange program when I was in high school and 30-something years later, I'm still good friends with the family I stayed with in Finland, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Ah, yes.
You found your crowd.
Excellent.
Did you? Okay.
Well, it's funny because I, before here, the district where I used to teach, we had an exchange with a, with a high school, where it was the same high school every other year. They would come in the fall, we would go in the spring. And it was a high school in Normandy. And this was, the two families, the American family and the French family hit it off so well that they in fact swapped homes for two, two weeks in the summer. And the French family came here and they spent two, two weeks on the North Shore. And as I said, the American family went and spent two weeks in Normandy. So, yeah, it, I mean, absolutely. And I still have former students who took part in that exchange who still keep in touch from many, many years ago with their, their French hosts. So it is definitely much more impactful than, not to poo-poo any school trip, any, but I still, I will say that you can make that.
A lot of crowd over here.
When I got the mic, I can, I can throw shade.
I mean, there are four of you, aren't we picking a winner?
Ain't so far.
Any other questions?
Just the, the same question, since it's a different travel organization, I'm assuming they're going to handle all of the requirements to come in and out at that date?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I know it's changing.
Yes, and frankly, excuse me, frankly, when we're traveling to France and staying in France, I fully anticipate, you know, French house, French rules. So, you know, in terms of vaccination. So, you know, in terms of vaccination, there might be an even stricter requirement for people coming in and staying with families. We can certainly find that out. We actually, of course, this is all pending school committee approval, we, we made the executive decision that we would be requiring travel insurance to the tune of, I think it's $70. So, and yeah, we just decided that that would just be a requirement of the trip. And as Erica touched on, in this day and age, with everything changing seemingly in 48 hours, it just makes all the sense in the world.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed field trip to France in April 2023.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Yes, you're all set.
Thank you so much, Alec.
All right, 9.4 is to discuss proposed field trip to Argentina in April of '23.
Oh, you're back.
So I'm not actually going to go on this one, but I'm going to speak to it on behalf of Laura Mlerby, who's a Spanish teacher at the high school and wants to organize this trip. In the past, we have traditionally done, you know, as a department, we've done trips to France and to Spain, and she felt really strongly that it would be nice to do a different destination for our Spanish speakers. So this one is through EF Tours, which is another company that we've worked with pretty extensively. And it includes nine days, including Buenos Aires and Iguaçu, and then a flight back home from there. Also seems like a really great opportunity for travel. And this one to be more language-focused, so this one, we're not going to turn anybody away, but I think it's going to mostly appeal to students who are studying Spanish and give them an opportunity to really expand those skills as they travel.
Great.
I'm not going to move, though.
No, don't, you stay right there.
She's going to make me ask the same question.
I know, Alec, you asked the same question.
You know, and thank you for asking because in the last couple of years, since we haven't done a lot of travel, you know, this hasn't come up, and you have reminded me that I need to look better, I need to get a better answer to your question. As I said, the, the Global Citizenship Program does have, since we haven't given the scholarship in three years, we have some money saved up for that, but it's definitely a, a goal to make travel accessible to all of our students.
And it's important to communicate that because the families that can't afford it will not ask.
Absolutely.
They'll just say no thank you to the trip.
I find that sometimes they don't believe me anyway when I do say it, but I will continue to say it.
Yes.
Yes.
We will find a way.
Yes, no, that is important.
As long as there's just one contact that they can just reach out to and ask the question. I think that's important.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. I think it will bear repeating to say it here, right? If any, any student who wants to attend any of these trips, we encourage you to attend, and please don't let financial impact have any bearing on your decision. We will find a way to make it happen.
We will figure it out.
John's saying, oh, Lord.
Well, we're also missing as we update procedure.
Yes.
That we can update the forums so we don't have to continually, we can have them articulate.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed field trip to Argentina in April 2023.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? Yes, unanimously approved as well. Thank you. It is nice to have these back on the books and being able to do them just based on the current situation wherever you are traveling to. I know it was a tough year with vaccination status on some of the field trips. I know a lot of districts didn't do field trips, so I was glad that for Hingham students, we were able to still do them. I know it was not without some angst and some issues along the way, but we did the best we could, and it's very nice to see that we're back to somewhat normal, so. Thank you. Yeah? Good. Thank you. All right, 9.5 is to receive notification of any new hires, retirements, or resignations. I believe Sherry told me we don't have any unless that is changed. Gary, sorry.
It's not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. So no new notifications. Subcommittee and project reports, we probably don't have too many since I just assigned them today. Does anyone have?
I have plenty.
You have plenty, huh? All right, you go.
Special education met on Thursday for our last meeting of the year. It was one of the weird in-between committee meetings because it was rescheduled from before. And so it was maybe the final meeting of the special ed committee if they end up getting merged. The Hingham Educational Foundation, I told you last month that they approved the grants. They did their grant process, I think, on May 11th. All of that money should be dispersed to people by the middle of this month. So that's what they're doing, they're dispersing money right now. And the Hingham Arts Alliance on Sunday has a, reading from my phone, the Arts on the Green, which is on Sunday, June 12th, from 12 o'clock till 2 o'clock over on the Greenway in between REI Sports and Tolls at, don't gesture at the microphone. But it's going to have a drum circle with Ed Sorrentino from the South Shore Conservatory, performance and dancing with Missy's Movement and Mosaic Dance, and live music from Hingham High School students from 1:15 to 2 o'clock, and crafts and face painting throughout the rest of it. So you can go to hinghamartsalliance.com to get more information about that, but that'll be Sunday at the Derby Shops.
Awesome. Thank you.
For your snap.
Jim, you want to do snap?
First is for snap, this Friday is their annual cocktail event at the South Shore Country Club at 6:00 PM. And then tickets are still on sale online. And the other thing I have is the, for the facilities committee, if we are meeting, we had one meeting two weeks ago and they're meeting again next Monday.
Great, thank you.
And then we had a finance subcommittee meeting, but John covered most of it, and I have warrants in the packet.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything. Carrie?
No.
All right, great. Items not reasonably known, 48 hours in advance of meeting, sounds like John has something.
Thursday, the open bids for 370 vans, those are the special education vans. And we, we sent out five packages to vendors upon request, and we received just one bid. And that bid was from Quality Van Sales in the amount of $158,136. We had anticipated these vans would cost about $165,000. So I, I think, and we've done business with quality vans before, we've had other vans from them, they're a very good vendor, they're responsive and, and very reliable. It, it was interesting, in this bid, in, in all bids that we do now, we have to put some type of language in that says, we want these things by this time, but, you know, if, if you can't do that, tell us when you think you can do it so that we can, you know, use some measured basis of identifying when we'll actually get the equipment. You know, which is also one of the reasons why we wanted to go out to bid now to get these in queue so that we can get them as early as possible next year. Their bid came in, they, they're reasonably sure we'll get two of them before school starts, which is a good timing. And they'll try to get all three, but the, the third one may be sometime in October. So, you know, we wanted to get these in queue and get them, get them moving. And that, so, and, and the funds that we would use would be end-of-year funds for '22. And, and as I said before in the, the budget update, we had took, taken a vote to lease for five years at, at Town Hall, you know, to have that available. That would cost a recurring of about $26,000, but whereas we're purchasing these, we won't have that expense year to year. So that actually represents a budget savings for FY '23. So what I'm asking for is a, a vote from the school committee to, you know, authorize the award, or award it to Quality Van Sales in the amount of 158,136. And, you know, to fund it by the use of FY '22 funds.
I think just to, even though that third van that might not be available by September, that would still include the fiscal year '22 funds, correct?
Oh, yes, yes.
Reminder, just to, for the public to know that, even though we're not, yep.
Since we award, this project, project is in progress right now. We've, you know, we're award to Quality Vans, FY '22, and we've identified the source of funds for that purpose as FY '22. So we would just encumber those funds into FY '23. And when we receive the vans, we pay for two, if, if all three, Tom will pay for all three, but we will pay once we receive the equipment. And we'll use FY '22 encumbered funds for that as opposed to FY '23 funds.
And these are new vans, right?
These are brand new vans, yep. '22, yeah, there were 20, 22 vans.
Any other questions? None of the public or... Nothing from the public? Okay. All right. Do you, we want to make a motion?
Sure. Thank you for writing this out, John. To award to Quality Van Sales Inc. the contract for the purchase of three 7D special ed vans in the amount of $158,136 to be funded from the fiscal year '22 end-of-year funds.
I'll second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? All right. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right. I just want to make one note. Our next school committee meeting will actually be on June, Tuesday, June 21st, where we will hear the strategic plan and maybe have some action on some budget items. So I just want to make that note. And other than that, we, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Carrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. We are adjourned.